Welcome to Velocity, the Vista Chamber Podcast. I'm your host, Vista Chamber CEO Rachel Beld, and it's my privilege to interview the movers, shakers, and changemakers impacting our amazing Vista community and beyond. Today, we welcome City Council member Joe Green. Joe was first elected to Vista City Council in 2016 and re-elected in 2020. A longtime Vista resident, business owner, and Vista Chamber member, Joe's deeply rooted in the community, having attended Vista schools and served on the PTA for over a decade. He's a proud father and grandfather, and is committed to improving communication and collaboration in Vista. Joe believes in fostering a diverse and inclusive community. #Wave, we are Vista every day. Welcome, Joe.
That's right, girl. #Wave, how you doing?
Good. Thank you for being here. I appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you for having me on. I've been looking forward to being on the show.
Yay!
Glad to get the invite.
Great. Well, I've been looking forward to having you, and it's a perfect time because there's so much I want to learn about you and about your work on council and all the things. So let's just jump in.
Let's go.
My first question for you is, I know you're Vista-born and raised, and so I want to know, what is it like? What was it like growing up in Vista?
Well, you know, for me, I grew up a lot different than I live right now. I grew up-
A lot of us do.
I grew up on East Los Angeles Street, which, over the years, has changed to Townside Drive in Vista. At one point in time, we got grants from different state organizations to kind of make the neighborhood look better, and they changed the name of the street. But over the years, it's changed a lot. I mean, not just from development and housing and schools, and really, opportunities in Vista have grown. You know, when I was a kid, there wasn't any real mentorship programs. I didn't really have any adults looking out for us. They had what was called the Latchkey Kid Program when you were a kid, and you literally wore the key around your neck, and they'd know you don't have a parent at home, and you're gonna go home and hang out. So I feel like we really weren't investing in our youth and looking towards our youth and our future at all when I was a kid. And a lot of my friends and family members kind of fell through the cracks, and you know, I feel like where I'm at now in Vista and the position that I put myself in has really, you know, my past has affected me, and my present has really inspired me to do more for that community that I came from. So, you know, over the years, I feel like Vista has just changed into more of a family community. It's very welcoming. It's a place where you can walk into City Hall and speak to any employee, and they greet you with a smile. Our fire department is very gracious. Our sheriff's deputies have a community policing presence now, as opposed to when I was a little kid. They had those green and white, you know, sheriff's cars that would scare people away when they ran around, and it wasn't really there to, you know, do any type of community building. It was more to crack heads and, you know, get some training, because we had the jail in Vista back in the day. So I've really just seen Vista evolve into a community that's more of a family-friendly community, and it's a community that's welcoming for businesses and for innovation. And it's a community that I'll probably never leave, and I hope that my kids and their kids will never leave.
Yeah, that's great. So you mentioned, you know, that there were friends of yours that maybe took a different path growing up. And so you've seen it all, really?
Yes, ma'am.
And so what do you think is the difference between, or what changed for you that helped you go on a path to become an elected official, a business owner, and to make those kinds of choices in your life? Was there something specific that you feel like geared you in the right direction?
You know, I mean, I'd be lying to myself if I didn't say my wife.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I feel like any partner that you choose-
You met young. You met young.
Yeah, I mean, I've been married for 26 years.
Yeah.
So we got married when we were 19 years old, and like I say, I didn't consider myself a man even until probably 26, 27 years old, just because of the way that I lived early on in my life. And just my wife constantly pointing me back to do the right thing, pointing me to the Lord, and pointing me towards serving, and just realizing that I had gifts that I could share. And, you know, then surrounding yourself by people who believe in you, and people who want to see you do good, and, you know, basically inspire others. And-
Yeah.
There was a lady back in the day by the name of Tina Huesman, and I always go back to this, because I didn't have a dad growing up. My dad left my mom when I was two months old. And my daughter, we're really young parents, so when I got into the PTA, a lady named Tina Huesman came to me when my daughter Emily was in fourth grade, and said, "Hey, Joe, we need a new president of the PTA." Had never been in the PTA before. And I said, "Well, what does that job entail?" She said, "All you gotta do is give speeches and make jokes." And I was like-
Bingo!
"That sounds like a fantastic job for me, Tina Huesman." So that's what started my advocacy and my real involvement in the community. Once I became, you know, that person, that president, I was out in front a lot more. I felt that I was more of an example and more of a role model. I held myself to kind of a higher standard. And then, you know, the real goal for me was being a positive male role model on campus, because I never had a positive male role model. So, you know, I guess that was, my daughter was in fourth grade, and currently, she's 26. So that was probably, gosh, I don't know, 18 years ago or so, that kind of shifted me more on a service-directed path. So it's been a great ride ever since. And so if anybody tells you, "Hey, all you gotta do is give speeches and make jokes," no, that's not true.
Yeah.
You have to create-
There's more to it. There's more to it.
Create agendas, read bylaws, know what you're doing, and really inspire people to, you know, move in the same direction for the benefit of your organization.
So to me, it sounds like you had an important influence, which was your wife, who you met and fell in love with at a young age.
Yes.
And then, being a parent and investing in your kids-
Yes.
Really were two of the main pivot points in your life that really steered you in the right direction. So for people listening, you have to find people who are in your corner who believe in you, maybe even when you don't believe in yourself.
Certainly.
And then, you have to find something that you care about greater than yourself, like your kids or some other passion, to help you figure out what's the right thing to do.
For sure. And you know that it's not always going to be easy. I mean, I own a mortgage and real estate company, you know, that's what my Chamber membership is for. And the mortgage and real estate business is like a roller coaster. And in a way, we had a very tough time from a real estate standpoint. There were some bad investments between me and some family members and some falling outs and things. But there was a time where I was depressed and didn't work, and my wife went and actually worked and, you know, worked at REO company, making a salary, paying the bills, because I was broken. You know, I mean, the market crashed. I felt like I'd invested my whole life into this, didn't have the equity in my home I thought I was gonna have. And that was a real, you know, struggle for me to get back up and say, "Hey, is this really what I want to do?" And is being self-employed really what I want to do? Because as you know, being an entrepreneur is tough, you know? I get fired every two weeks. I gotta go out and get a new job as a real estate broker and loan guy, because once your deal closes, you gotta find another one. So, you know, it wasn't always easy getting here, and I feel like the ups and downs of the journey are what really make it when you get to being successful. Not that I consider myself uber-successful, but I don't struggle like I used to. And I think the reason I don't is because I plan better, and I've already paid the dumb tax for doing a lot of, you know, dumb things that I had done in the past.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, that's, you know, in that story, a couple of takeaways for me is, one, the partnership again with your wife, knowing that, you know, you have to ebb and flow together. One person leans this way, the other person, you know, has got you. And then also, the piece about being an entrepreneur, which was actually my next question, so perfect segue-
Go ahead.
Is just kind of the importance of understanding, especially in the real estate market, is a roller coaster. So when things are really high, you gotta set something aside. When things are really low, you gotta hang in there and lean on your other skills and tools. So I think there's some really good takeaways for other entrepreneurs and business owners that are listening. You know, I'm not a business owner. You know, I run the Chamber, but we're essentially a small business too. And so when things happen in the economy, when things happen that impact our business members, that impacts the Chamber. And, you know, I have to wear an HR hat. I have to wear an IT hat. I have to wear an attorney hat. And I'm curious about you, like, how many hats do you wear? I know you have a lot of hats, like actual hats.
I do have a lot of actual hats, really good hats, always repping Vista for the record. But I think the biggest part about being an entrepreneur is being able to diversify your sources of income and how you get your income. I've maintained a real estate broker's license and a mortgage, an NMLS, National Mortgage Loan Specialist License, my whole entire career, so I can always do homes and loans. As a broker, I also own a property management company, so I have about 22 doors I manage. So if you're looking to have a property managed, or you're looking to rent a property, holla at your boy. But, you know, so I have different sources of income through real estate. And then also, I have to find other things that I do as far as, you know, just consulting and speaking with people and things like that.
Sure.
But you're absolutely correct. I'm the plumber. I'm the IT guy. Currently, I have tape on my copy machine, because tray one comes out when the paper doesn't go the right way. So as an entrepreneur, you kind of do everything, but you really have to be prepared for every market, regardless of what your job is, is like, hey, if I'm not going to be selling houses, can I do loans? If I can't do loans, am I managing property? If I'm not managing property, who am I mentoring, or who needs my skillsets to, you know, further their life? And that's where consulting comes in. And I feel like being a consultant is probably the path that people, you know, my age kind of, you know, go to, because they've had so much life experience and really a whole lot to share. So-
Cool. Okay, we're gonna get to consulting in a minute.
Go ahead.
But I want to ask you, for folks who don't know, and I've heard the story about the parking spots, but I want to ask, how did you decide to run for council? You have a lot on your plate. You've got your dad, you've got a household, you're running multiple companies with all of these different diverse revenue streams, and then you decide, "Oh, I'll run for council." So tell me about that decision and what happened there.
Well, yeah, it wasn't a decision that I collaborated with my wife on, number one. So shout out to anybody running for office, collaborate with the wife first, very, very important.
Or husband.
Yeah, or husband, or partner, whoever your better person is.
Yes, yes.
I always say they're better, because they accept us with all of our inadequacies, you know? So it was really an emotional decision initially. I've owned my business on Civic Center Drive, which used to be Escondido Avenue.
It was.
And again, we changed the names of streets in Vista, which I like Civic Center Drive better than Escondido Avenue. It definitely makes sense. But for the years I was there, we had cars that were parked on Escondido Avenue to make room for our customers when they came into our businesses. Our strip's been there for a while. We got an accountant, a chiropractor, myself, Ed Estes' office, who actually his son used to be the mayor of Vista. And so we had a group of well-known businesses in there. And we got a notification on a Thursday, they were taking parking away, and we needed to go to City Hall on Tuesday to talk about it. None of us could make it, because our schedules were busy. And at the time, I was the president of what was the Del Norte PTA Association. Now, it's the Vista Unified School District PTA Association, name changes again. But I really felt like it should have been easier to communicate with me, like I'm out there, like, people who work for the city have kids in the school district. And at the time, I was calling homes, trying to get parents involved, and was a real big fan of communication. Not that I even wanted to stop, you know, their cause or whatever they were doing, but I felt like as a business owner for all those years, somebody should have reached out to me and my fellow business owners, and given us an opportunity or a little bit more time. Now, once they passed it on the next Tuesday, by the end of the week, code was out there writing, you know, notifications, not actual tickets, but hey, here's a citation, you're gonna start getting notifications. And it really fired me up to be like, hey, communication is horrible here with the city. We haven't really, we hadn't really seen any electeds at any school events. And as you know, now the electeds are all over the school events, which I think is great. And I always told people, I felt like we were stepparents. And if you've ever seen a situation where a divorce, you know, one parent might blame the other one, and you're raising the same child, but sometimes it seems like you're working against each other instead of working for the child. That's what I kind of equated the school district and the city to.
Yeah.
Is they were on their own separate islands. They weren't communicating with each other, and they sure weren't communicating with the citizens of Vista. So it really inspired me to be like, hey, I want to make sure people know when something's happening, even if it's just parking being taken away in front of your house. And the reason I was given is there was a bike study done in the city of Vista. And at the end of the day, do you remember how many bikes were going up and down that road?
No.
One bike up and down that road. And so many lives were affected, whether they were residences. I was a business, so I wasn't parking there at night. You know, I was just parking there during the day, and we had to park down at City Hall and walk up the street. But if you drive down Civic Center now, a lot of these residences had to pave their front yards. They had to actually have engineers come in and regrade their front yards, so there's parking on terraces because of this. And not considering the focused impact and really communicating with the community, that's what inspired me. So I was like, hey, I want to be elected so I could improve communication. Number one is, if you're not communicating with somebody, you don't have a good relationship. So that's what I wanted to start with.
Okay. Well, so when you were first elected, I was on city staff-
Go ahead.
-at that time. And I can say, my own personal opinion was, you were very different than the council members that we had had in the past. So I'm curious just what that experience was like for you when you first came onto council, and what was that like for you? Because you were different. You brought a different energy.
Yeah, I definitely was different. I still am different, actually. I don't know that most, you know, electeds, you know, act the way I do or present things the way I do. But I just have a real joy for life that I feel like I've been given because of where I've come from, and I feel really blessed to be where I am. So for me, it was really tough to have four people literally against what my ideas were when I came onto council, because as somebody who was involved in the school district and really pro-public schools, being a conservative, you know, Republican or whatever they want to label you as, as an elected official, the things I was passionate about didn't jive with party politics. And I've never been a politician, per se, and never been really too much of a party guy, especially at the local level. So it was kind of tough for me to be like, oh, there's politics involved in this. It's not really just about how we can improve the city. So it was a really tough, you know, I call it a, it's like sharpening iron, you know? It doesn't sharpen right away. You gotta chip it away. It's a real tedious process to get iron sharp. And for me, it just meant that I had to create relationships with these people. So Amanda Rigby, John Aguilera, John Franklin and Judy Ritter, those were the four people that I worked with. And I had to get at least two of them to vote with me if I wanted to accomplish anything. For the first two years, I had nobody. I was the only person. And not that we didn't vote together a lot. A lot of votes were 5-0, but they were bringing things forward that I felt were partisan, and that we shouldn't have stuff like this coming to our council. So, you know, I don't think politics has any place in city council. And for the first few years, I really felt like I was handcuffed. I couldn't necessarily do what I wanted or change what I wanted. I feel like in 2018, when we, I ran for mayor and lost, which was great. I always say God's Plan A is always better than my Plan A, B, C, or D, but I did get Karina Contreras at that time. And I felt like we were two people who could second each other's ideas. We're from different political parties, but we were both from Vista. And that's when things really started changing. We had just passed Measure Z, you know, the cannabis measure in the city of Vista. And I feel like after the first couple of years, once I got Karina next to me, it was somebody that I could, you know, glean what she was thinking, you know, from a, you know, liberal side, per se. And then she could listen to what I was saying, and together, we really started bringing some really good stuff forward. And the conservative body that I was working with started realizing that, hey, it's not about Democrats or Republicans. It's about what's best for Vista. And sometimes, lots of times, everybody has good ideas. Everybody has bad ideas too. Everybody has good ideas here and there. And the truth is, is you need to listen. And the reason I've been married so long is, one of my favorite sayings is, listening is the bridge that love travels on. And even if you don't agree with somebody, the fact you listen to them lets them know you love them, and it gives you the right to speak into their lives. And I felt like there wasn't a lot of listening going on. There's a lot of dictating what their wills were. And as we listened to each other and came together, it's really allowed us to create the council we have today. So it started out a little rocky, but now I feel like where we're at and where I'm leaving this council moving forward is somewhere that's really unbreakable with a really good staff that's ready to move forward for the city.
Yeah. Well, and you mentioned that you're leaving council, so I know you're not seeking, you're not seeking reelection. You're not on the ballot. And so I'm curious, how did you, how did you come to that decision? I mean, eight years is a long time.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Really, it came to the 20-year mark, you know? I did 12 years in PTA. And when I say I did 12 years in PTA, I mean, I really worked hard for my city and my PTA for those years. I mean, Spirit Fridays, you know, Nate, you name it, dances, assemblies.
Dinah's.
So much stuff. And I was putting in, you know, probably 40 hours a week for the different PTAs. At one time, I had three kids in three different schools, and I'm the president of all those schools, if you could imagine, and doing all the fundraising things, while still being the sole income of my family and raising my family. So I've really dedicated the last 20 years of my life to heavy service, you know? I mean, I lead youth groups at church. I teach Sunday schools to, you know, kindergarten through second graders at church. So I do a lot from a service standpoint. And although it's been great to serve my community, and I love what I've done and the impact I've made, having children that are 26 to 17 right now shows me that there's some things that I obviously missed, and some things that I really want to be a part of moving forward. So as you said, I have two grandkids right now. I really want to be there for my grandkids and my wife, my daughters. My son, I would say, it's his senior year in high school. And that was one of the real deciding factors for me, is as somebody who didn't have a dad growing up, I have a great relationship with my son. We have Boy Day every Thursday. And we've had Boy Day ever since he was a little kid, because he's got three sisters. And I'm like, hey, we gotta have Boy Day once a week. So I've really felt like that was one of my big factors, is I want to be there for him his final year of high school. I want to take him on those visits to college. I want to, if he wanted to go backpacking in Europe for a month or two as a grown man, taking a break, I want to be able to do that.
Yeah.
And I don't want to do a half-assed job as an elected official. The things I wanted to accomplish when I got elected, which they were really three things: improve communication, legalize cannabis, and fix that Vista sign. Those are the three things. And I know it sounds a little shallow, but when I was running for office, I was like, look, that's what I gotta do. And it comes down to the, you know, public safety, infrastructure, business development, but those are my three personal things I wanted to do. And we've legalized cannabis. We have great revenue. I feel like we've almost completely gotten rid of the stigma. We actually had a public safety event sponsored by a cannabis company this year, which was pretty crazy. That Vista sign says Vista now. It doesn't say Paseo Santa Fe. And from a communication standpoint, my elected officials are readily available. All their cell phone numbers are online. They're showing up to a lot of events. You can zoom into meetings now. If you want to be engaged and involved in the city and get the information, you get it. So my three big things, check, check, check. And I'm hoping that the people running for office now have three new things that they want to try to change, and that they'll have the courage to know when it's time to step aside. Because having a title is great, but the best title I have is Jen's husband and Emily's dad and Alyssa's dad and Elena's dad and Joey's dad. Like, those are the titles I want.
What's your grandpa name?
Grandpa Joe.
Okay.
I earned grandpa. And the reason is, is grand, as you know, is a thousand, right?
Right.
So grandpa, it's a thousand times better than regular paw.
Oh, okay.
So I felt like I earned that.
Yeah, I like it.
Really exciting.
The Vista Viking Festival returns for its 22nd year this September 21st and 22nd at the Vista Antique Gas and Steam Engine Museum. More axes, more mead, and more parking for 2024. Stay up to date and get your tickets today for the Vista Viking Festival at vistavikingfestival.com. That's awesome. Well, so those are three great, you know, things that you had in mind, and you were able to accomplish those. Is there anything else that you've been able to do on council that you're particularly proud of?
Well, yes. And I mean, after I got elected, you know, I had a lot of ideas. I spoke with a lot of people, and being connected to the community, I really get a lot of ideas from a lot of people. We were able to bring pickleball to the community of Vista, which was something a lady named Luann Roberts, who was an elementary school teacher of my son, brought forward to me. And I brought it forward as a discussion item years ago. And at the time, nobody had heard of pickleball. Pickleball came forward.
And now pickleball's taking over the world.
Exactly. Pickleball's taking over the world, you know? You know, the other real good thing, like I say, is communication. Like, we have, you know, access Vista apps. You can report what you want. You can call in. I feel like that's great. And then, you know, I really feel like the hiring process in the city of Vista was a big deal. Patrick Johnson was our city manager for a very long time. He may have been your boss when you worked at the city of Vista. And I love Patrick Johnson. He's a great man. He worked really hard. What him and our previous, you know, government had accomplished prior to me being elected was really, really fantastic. But I found through being elected and kind of digging into the directors and things like that, that there was a little blind spot in the management department. And I always say, people call it a blind spot, because you don't see it, you know? And when you have a lot of power, you like that power. And people don't like to give up that power. So one thing as a council that I'm super proud of is we have an inclusive hiring process. And initially, we were going to work with our previous city manager about it, and I think it's the best way to hire candidates. We have 11 directors that work in the city of Vista. They're responsible for 290-plus employees. These directors were previously appointed without a real interview process or a real recruitment process by our previous city managers. And it was done like that for years, all of the previous city managers. We'd be told on Monday, we got a new director. The fire department would be told to have a new fire chief and things like that. It makes some of the employees not feel like they're part of the team, you know? We want to know who our leaders are. We want to be vested in it. The school district had a great way of doing that with hiring superintendents and principals and things like that. So we brought forward a policy, a hiring, an inclusive hiring policy, where for any of our directors, our department directors, we have hiring panels of stakeholders. So if we're hiring a new fire chief, we get the fire guys in there. We get some sheriff's guys in there. We get some finance guys in there. We get different directors, different people who are vested within our city, and they recommend the top three candidates to our city manager. And then our city manager picks one of the top three. In the event he doesn't like any of the top three, we do the process all over again and give them a new batch. But I really felt like before, there was a lot of blame going on my city manager for having people that were turning around, you know? You hire a director and it didn't work out. Well, if you don't have a hiring panel, it's all on you. So with this new process, when we're hiring our new directors, I feel like when they come in, they're more vested, because they know who they're going to be working with. They feel like they're wanted there. And then from a city manager standpoint, you know you have the support of your staff, because they recommended these people to you. And if for some reason they don't work out, you can say, well, hey, they went through the whole, you know, interview process, and they were recommended to me through people. So I'm very proud of that, because I feel like as a government organization, you should be very transparent with your hiring, and you should be very inclusive. And the best way to build a team is to make everybody feel like they matter. And if you have your stakeholders on interview panels, whether they're employed with you, or they're city commissioners, or they're volunteers within the community-
I've served on a couple panels.
And it probably feels really empowering, you know?
Yeah, it was nice.
And at the end of the day, I know I don't make the final decision, but just having my voice heard feels really good. So as electeds, we came to that decision. We lost our previous city manager, but we have a new city manager now. We have a new city attorney. And our city manager, as you know, John Conley, has been a part of our city for over 25 years. And the team has really bought in to what he's selling. And the hires that he's made with our new fire chief and our public works director and the new directors he's brought forward, you know, planning have really made a difference within our community. So, you know, if anybody that's elected or that runs businesses is out there, you know, listening, I really feel like the best way to lead is an inclusive style of leadership. It makes people feel vested. And at the end of the day, this family vibe we have in Vista is because everybody feels like they matter. It's a big thing.
Thanks. Thanks for all that background.
Sorry, you're welcome.
No, don't be sorry. It's good to know. You know, I was here in the public when all of that happened. And I think there were different perspectives that were presented publicly. There were different perspectives from different people involved in that process. So I appreciate hearing kind of the beginning of it and how it evolved and how it is.
Came from being a PTA dad, and seeing the way that the school district did it, and just thinking, that's pretty cool.
Yeah.
So, go ahead.
So I'm curious, there are other people, you know, we have that are running for council, either now or have considered it for the future.
Yeah.
What advice do you have for someone considering running for local office?
Number one is know that it is a full-time job, okay? That just because you're getting paid 18 bucks an hour, doesn't mean that you need to treat it like a part-time job. I treat this job like it's what puts bread on my table, even though it doesn't, because I feel like you're now held to a higher standard, a higher level. You represent the city of Vista with everything you do. And with that, as somebody running for office and somebody who's elected to office, you need to remember that you represent everybody, okay? Whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, whether they voted for you or not, the second you're elected, you represent all those people. And whether they agree with you or disagree with you, whether they're yelling at you or singing your praise, it's your job to be there and be present, and to listen to them, and to take your beatings when beatings are needed, and to take your praise when praise is due. But as a candidate running for office, you can't pigeonhole any one demographic, whether it's a race, a religion, a political party, you know, sex, whatever. It's like, you have to know you represent everybody, and you need to go out there when you're approaching running for office with that approach is, hey, I don't know everything about everything. I know what I want to do, but I represent everybody. And sometimes, I'm gonna make a decision that might not be what I think I want, but I know that's what my community wants, and that's exactly what your job is. So that's my advice, is make sure, you know, you serve everybody. When I say I love Vista, I love everybody in Vista. I don't care if you're a Democrat or Republican. I don't care how you've talked about me in the past.
What about outside of District 2?
Well, I never-
Just kidding.
Yeah. And as you know, that's another thing too.
Yeah, the districting.
As far as my decision is, I love my district. I've lived in District 2 a long time. My kids went to Beaumont Elementary School. I went to Lincoln Middle School. So I'm familiar with the district, but I was elected at large. And I'm a Vista kid that was evicted from every district in this city as a kid, because I was raised real rough. And in the event I ever did come back and represent my city, I would want to represent the entire city. I wouldn't want to represent one particular district. I think that there are going to be really good candidates that can be focused more on their district, and I'm excited to see what they're gonna do.
Yeah, okay. Is there anything else that you want people to know? Anything we didn't talk about?
No, I mean, we talked about a lot of stuff. I mean, I think the biggest thing people need to know is that Vista is a community of families. And when I say families, I mean, business families and family families. But, you know, we're gonna accept you like you're family. If you come here and you love on us and you're positive, this is a place people can be successful in. So I'm excited I'm excited for people to come check out Vista. And although I'm not an elected official in Vista, like, you know, I got my real estate business. I opened a new consulting company called.
Tell me about your consulting company.
California Policy Consultants, my friends. So I'm the CEO of California Policy Consultants. And really what my policy consultant company is focused on is implementing policies within cities that help with their economic development. Whether that's with, uh, you know, cannabis revenue that they're unfamiliar with, how to deal with the stipulations of that. Or how can we market your local businesses and your local community better? And a lot of that has to do with policies that you already have as a city within municipal code or within your city council policy handbook. So I really want to start going to different cities around different municipalities, like I've been able to do for my city, and figure out what the best, your best policies are to bring the best, you know, products and awareness to the cities, you know, across the nation really. Cause I don't want to be limited to just one little backyard now. I feel like what we've done in Vista can be duplicated nationally. And the policies that we've implemented are very, very good policies that can be very beneficial for other communities.
Awesome. So say the name of the consulting.
California Policy Consultants. So we'll be launching our website and everything live at the beginning of October. And I'll make sure you have all the info and we will definitely be members of the Chamber of Commerce. I advise you join too.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Shout out. Okay. So I have a few rapid fire questions to ask every guest. Tell me a book that was important to you, a book you think people should read.
Fault in Our Stars.
So good.
Yeah. This is a book I read, uh, at eighth grade camp with my middle daughter. And I literally cried. And I feel like as a dad, if you read a book that your kids like, it really gives a real connection. I'm a girl dad and it's a great book. So read Fault in Our Stars. If you haven't read it, it'll make you cry.
I love that book and I love reading with my kids.
Yes, it's really important.
Yeah. And, uh, sometimes some of the book, best books I've read have been ones that my kids, I'm, mom, I'm reading this and you gotta read it too. I'm like, okay.
Why I read it. It's not one I would have picked myself. And I want to say the guy's name who wrote it was like Michael Green or something like that. So I was like, oh, well, he might be family. I may as well.
Yeah, absolutely. He's a cousin.
Yeah, there you go somewhere.
He's a cousin. Okay. Uh, tell me a song you always have to turn up. What's your jam?
Well, I have lots of jams because, um, my ADHD insists that I sing very loud as I drive around. Man, I'd say, believe it or not, I'm a country music junkie.
Okay.
And Garth Brooks released an album decades ago called The Secret Life of Chris Gaines.
Oh, yeah. It was like an alter ego album.
Yes, okay. That's called It Don't Matter To The Sun.
Okay.
And you can't even find it on any platform. Like I literally had to like burn it and like download it. So I have it in my car. But it's called It Don't Matter To The Sun. And it talks about, you know, his relationship with his wife. And like, it might not matter to, it might not matter to a lot of people, but it matters to me. So it's a song that I sing when I am rolling around and just kind of feeling like, hey, I need to make sure, you know, people know that they matter. And so that's a, it's a heart tugger, you know? So if I'm that mood, that's that. And then if I'm in a pumped up mood, industry baby, throw some industry baby on there.
Okay. All right. Get it done. Okay. Uh, what's something that inspires you?
Um, my kids. I mean, I hate to keep going back to them, but like I, uh, didn't have a good life growing up. And I want my kids to be comfortable failing. And as weird as that sounds, everyone wants their kids to be successful. I want them to be successful, but I want them to know they can fail and it's okay. I didn't have the option to fail. I worked in a family business. I mean, I started sweeping parking lots for fifty cents as a little kid. I had, I was everything. All the pressure was on me. I couldn't fail. And I feel like when you have the option to fail, you have the option to really expand your mind and decide what it is you want to do. My daughter went to college to be a lawyer on an undefeated debate scholarship. And she's going to be an artist now. And as a dad, I couldn't be happier that that's what she wants to do. And I don't care if she makes fifty grand a year for the rest of her life. And she gets to make her art and be the happiest person in the world. Because it's not about money. It's about happiness. And I really want to be able to provide whatever life my kids want, whether that's a life of being an artist or a life of being a lawyer or a life of being an engineer. Uh, but I want them to know that it's okay to change your mind. It's okay to fail. It's okay to be something else. Because some of us are just placed in positions, you know, from a work standpoint where they're like, hey, you gotta work for your family. You gotta do this. You gotta do that. And, you know, as a, as a dad, watching my kids grow and watching them really, you know, develop and become real humans and real adults. It's one of the coolest things ever to just let them be and make sure they know that there's a place they can fall where I'm always going to catch them.
Yeah. And what a blessing to be in a place where you can catch them.
Yes. Why you work real hard, man. I tell people, you wake up at four thirty every day and work till eleven o'clock at night and love your life every day. Makes it tough to fail.
Yeah. That's good. That's good. Okay. Give me a Vista business you think deserves a shout out.
Oh dude, I'm going to give you a new Vista business that deserves a shout out. So I'm working with a lady named Katie Lee. And she actually has a big equity group over the next years that are going to be investing in the city of Vista. You're going to get to know me very good with new businesses. Invita Head Spa.
I'm so stoked on this.
One fifty Broadway, Vista, California. We're actually going to be giving away raffle tickets at your, uh, our free treatments at the, uh, thing tonight. You got a mixer tonight or something like that. But Invita Head Spa in Vista, the closest head spa right now is in Palm Springs. And there's a three-week wait just to get the scalp treatment done. And what they do here is they look deep into your scalp to see where you're at. Are you stressed out? You got oils? You got inflammation? And they treat your scalp. They treat your hair, full body massage for over an hour, um, in this full body massage machine. And then they just send you home feeling like a king or a queen.
Can we go right now?
I'm going there after this, actually. Um, but, uh, but we are, uh, having the grand opening on Saturday, as you know, with the chamber. And I think having that business in our town is really gonna, you know, help it be more of a destination town. That's the goal, is get people to come to Vista for things we have that other people don't.
It looks fancy inside. It looks nice.
Pretty fancy. You got people spending money in Vista. And that's what I'm so proud of as an elected. It's just seeing people like, hey, Joey, love your town. How can we be in your town? And I'm like, well, let's go. I'll help you.
Yeah, that's great.
Invita Head Spa, check them out. Open seven days a week.
Awesome. Thank you, Joe, for being here.
You are very welcome, Rachel Bell. Thank you for having me. And congratulations on your Velocity, uh, podcast success.
It's fun.
Seen some real good guests on here and you're doing a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you to our guest, Joe Green. And thank you for listening to Velocity. If you like what you heard, tell a friend and subscribe. Help us move Vista forward with Velocity. The Vista Chamber of Commerce is a nonprofit organization that serves as a catalyst for business growth. Find us online at vista chamber dot org.